We love our country. I love our country. I know we all do. That's why everybody's here right now. We love our country. We take pride in the privilege of being American. And this is a moment where we can and must come together as Americans, understanding we have so much more in common than what separates us. Let's come together with the character that we are so proud of about who we are, which is we are an optimistic people. We are an optimistic people. Americans by character are people who have dreams and ambitions and aspirations. We believe in what is possible. We believe in what can be. And we believe in fighting for that.
Welcome back to Pearls of Eden. In today's episode, we are going to do a reaction video to the, dare I say, cringe-worthy interview town hall campaign commercial is what it really was for Kamala Harris, where she delivers the scripted answers as she always does, you all. And so we're going to take a look at it, of course, and I'll give you my reaction as we play through the clips. So let's get to it.
That's how, that's how we came into being. Because the people before us understood that one of the greatest expressions for the love of our country, one of the greatest expressions of patriotism, is to fight for the ideals of who we are, which includes freedom to make decisions about your own body, freedom to be safe from gun violence, freedom to have access to the ballot box, freedom to be who you are and just be, to love who you love openly and with pride, freedom to just be. And that's who we are. We believe in all that. And so this is a moment where we stand knowing what we are fighting for. We're not fighting against. It's what we're fighting for.
Harris, you are as fake as press-owned nails, and I can see right through you. Let me help you out with something, because maybe somebody must not have told you. On TV and on every interview, given the same tired answer. So let me just help you out. When you are asked a question, why don't you try answering the question? People are not stupid. We can tell when you're dancing around the issue instead of answering the question. When you're asked, are people better off now or during Donald Trump's presidency? When you're asked about the border or your policies on immigration, answer the question. We don't care about your middle-class upbringing. We don't care that your mama had to save up to buy a house. We don't care about your summer job at McDonald's. We don't care about the lawns of the neighborhood that you lived in and how everybody took care of their lawn. That does not matter to me, and it doesn't matter to anybody else. I want you to answer the question. Because if people, my mind is already made up too, Kamala, because I can see right through you, and I know that you fake. But for somebody else whose mind is not made up, let me just help you out. Answer the question so that they can decide between you and your opponent. I don't know if you're just trying to paint him as the villain and try to skate by to be the, like you're the hero or the nice person. We don't care about that. Because being a hero and voting for the nice person is not what pays the bills. You understand what I'm saying? We can see through you. And that fake black accent that you keep doing, girl, you need to stop. Because you know good and well that you ain't got no black accent. You know good and well that you was born in San, you were from San Francisco and in Canada. Where you get that black accent from? Stop doing that, trying to be relatable. This does not make you relatable. It makes you look fake. And those of us like me, we can see through that. We can see through that. We can see through every interview that you do, that instead of then, that instead of answering the questions that are on the minds of the millions of American people who have the power to elect you to the highest office in the land, you're dancing around the issue. And you want to talk about how you was born a middle-class kid and how your mother had to save up to buy a house. I don't care, Kamala. So just, just to recap, stop dancing around the issue. Answer the question. If you're going to do an interview, answer a question that you are asked at the interview.
Let's open the door. Let's open the door and invite everybody else in. And everybody actually came.
Organically, organically. Like, this is the beauty of our country. You know, there's so much at stake in this election. And ultimately, the question before us is what kind of country do we want to live in? And the beauty of a democracy, as long as we can hold on to it, the beauty of a democracy is.
That's a very interesting statement. As long as we can hold on to democracy. How rich, that's one of her terms. How rich it is for you to say that, Kamala Harris, seeing that you were planted, you were crowned to be the presidential nominee. You got zero votes from the American people. You were put in place. And then you act as though you have earned this position, like you deserve to be promoted, when you have created this mess with President Joe Biden over the last three and a half years. And currently, you are still in the White House. And you've executed and made no change, no positive changes. Yet we are supposed to believe that when you are in charge, we should give you another four more years to do what? Very interesting. Would we give people on the job, everyday jobs, promotions for not producing results? But yet she's asking the American people to promote her, who the American people never even voted for? They were told she was the presidential nominee. They had no say-so? This is laughable, but let's keep watching.
Each of us has the power. Each of us has the power to answer that question.
Everybody on this call and beyond has the power. But can I just start with this?
Yes, please.
I have to say this because in all of my private conversations, Gail, and I've said this 100 times. And everybody is saying it. You all have said it, I know you have. It seems to us that something happened to you the moment Joe Biden, President Biden, stepped aside and withdrew his candidacy, that a veil or something dropped, and you just stepped into your power? I mean, literally, looking at you at a speech like the week before, which was a great speech, very nice. And then the next week, I saw you walking in the thing. And I said, what happened to you?
If you think that's something, you haven't seen anything yet. When a power-hungry person gets into position, their whole demeanor will change and shift. Everything that she's projected on Donald Trump is truly what she is. When she says nobody wants to work for Donald Trump, the truth is, nobody wanted to work under Kamala Harris. The truth is, if you go and do the research, the people say she is a tyrant. She is hell on wheels. She is unqualified. She is ineffective. And yet she walks around with her neck all proud and strutting, sticking out like a turkey.
You know, we each have those moments in our lives where it's time to step up.
Time to step up.
Time to step up, you know?
Well, the moment you heard, I mean, I really have been saying to people, it felt like a veil dropped and you sort of stepped through that veil. Did that actually, did you feel like that?
I felt a sense of responsibility, to be honest with you. And with that comes a sense of purpose. But I mean, we're all here and you all are taking time out of your busy lives, everyone here, everyone on the screen, because there really is so much at stake. You know, I have spent the majority of me of my career being concerned about the well-being of other people.
Yeah.
As I've said, my career as a prosecutor, I never looked at a victim or a witness and asked them, are you a Republican or a Democrat? The only thing I ever asked them is, are you okay?
Are you okay? I know when I heard that.
You know?
Touch me.
And all I ever asked them is if they were okay. Well, you know, there's this story that's on the internet about a hit-and-run case where it left a girl paralyzed. And supposedly, the hit-and-run driver was Kamala Harris. And you know, there is this story that I shared yesterday about a mother who was put on all of these charges. Her daughter had sickle cell anemia. She had a warrant out for her arrest. The daughter ended up having a stroke. I mean, you all can check out that story. I posted it yesterday. But this is a woman who wants you to believe that she cares. She cares about the people.
This is my mom. So I decided I was going to start prosecuting parents for truancy.
And I spend a majority of my time here at the hospital.
When Kamala Harris was the California Attorney General, she had me arrested and prosecuted because my handicapped daughter was sick in the hospital and had missed some days of school.
I have sickle cell anemia. Sickle cell anemia is a hereditary disease, and it is very, very painful.
In 2012, like all California parents, I received a threatening letter from Kamala Harris saying, we'll go to jail for a year if our kids even miss 10% of school days. Little did I know, there was a warrant out for my arrest. All of a sudden, the police is outside my house, and they started banging on the door. They told me I was under arrest.
And traveling this country and knowing what is at stake in terms of fundamental freedoms, what's at stake in terms of fighting against hate and those, those efforts to divide us. And I do know that I'm in a position to do something about it. So I felt a great responsibility. And, and the incredible power of the people, right? Who, you know, I'm not the only leader in this. We're all leaders in this. This is so much bigger than me. It's about who we are as Americans. And it's about making clear what we stand for. And what we stand for is, it is about the ideals upon which we were founded, including the importance of freedom and, and, and the importance of independence and the importance of dignity and purpose. But it is also about what we stand for in terms of our values. I, I think of it this way.
Yeah, I think a lot boils down to values. I just said values are on the line here.
Yes, Oprah, values are on the line. And they know that more than ever. People that will stand in the gap for children not being castrated. People who will stand on the line and intercede to say, no, we don't want men and women's sports. Yes, people who will stand in the gap, who will say, it's not right for you to choose what my child is able to do in my own household when it comes to their sexuality and them being a child and you having the decision on whether they take puberty blockers and being able to have a sex change? You're right, values are on the table. When we want God in our school and you want to keep him out. You're right, values are on the table. When you want to put tampons in boys' restrooms and you want to allow the opposite sex to go into the restrooms. Yes, values are on the line. Yes, people. What values are you fighting for? Unaliving babies just because you don't want to be responsible? Yes, values are on the line. It's not about my body, my choice. Before you were in your mother's womb, God formed you. He knew who, who you were. Yet you want to take life. You want to take matters into your own hand. Yes, values are on the line. And speaking of life, you want to know why Kamala Harris is so, so into Me Too movement? You want to know why she is so pro-abortion? She didn't have any children, does she? Wouldn't you want to know how many babies that she didn't carry? Wouldn't you want to know why she's so passionate about you two not being educated on other options than taking the life of a child? Don't you want to know? I'll leave that right there. You can do your own homework.
To articulate that.
You know, ever since the debate, we feel for our fellow citizens in Springfield. Do you not think about the fellow citizens in Springfield, Ohio? The Haitian families, the, the non-Haitian families, everybody having to deal with this lie?
Look at Queen Oprah giving a moral lesson about immigration, telling the American people and the citizens that have come out and shared their stories in Springville, Ohio, Chicago, and New York, that, hey, you don't know what you're talking about. Those are lies. Listen to her, the queen of lies, try to tell you what's moral, what's righteous, what's true. You all, we, the people, are coming out with our stories, and we're sharing it. And we're taking it to YouTube. We're taking it to social media. We're taking it wherever we can have a voice. Because mainstream media is full of lies. And they want to act like you don't know what you're talking about. They want you to pretend that you don't see and hear what's going on around you. They gaslight you at every corner. But I'm so grateful that the people are smartening up. I'm so grateful for the awakening, that people are like, something ain't right with this. Something ain't right with this water, okay? That they're trying to sell me. And I just pray that you will continue to have ears to hear. Now, here she's about to ask a question about immigration. Let's take a listen to see. Will we get word salad? Will we get more of the same? Will she take accountability because she was the one that was responsible for 100,000 plus? It's more than that. Haitians being dropped off all around rural America? All around the low-income neighborhoods of America? Will she take any responsibility? Or will she blame shit? Let's listen.
That has endangered the lives of Haitian people and anybody who looks Haitian. Everybody in America feels for that. And I, also, everybody in America, left, right, middle, has concerns about immigration. And I'm told that Justin, Justin, where are you in the audience? Justin?
Hello.
In our audience.
Hello, Madam Vice President.
You live in Michigan.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't say hello, Madam Vice President.
I do, I do.
What's your question? It's an immigration question.
My question for you is, when you become president, what would be your specific steps? Yeah, of course. What would be specific steps to strengthening the border?
So it's a wonderful and important question. I, you know, my background was as a prosecutor, and I was also the elected attorney general for two terms of a border state. So this is not a theoretical issue for me. This is something I've actually worked on. I have prosecuted transnational criminal organizations for the trafficking of guns, drugs, and human beings. I take very seriously the importance of having a secure border and ensuring the safety of the American people. Sadly, where we are now can be traced most recently back to the fact that when the United States Congress, members of the Congress, including some of the most conservative Republicans, came up with a border security bill. And here's what that border security bill would have done. It would have put 1,500 more border agents at the border. Let me tell you, those border agents are working around the clock. It would have just been about giving them some support and relief, which is probably why the border agents actually endorsed the bill. It would have allowed us to stem the flow of fentanyl. And I'm looking at people from all over the country here.
Also, starting with our administration, we gave TPS, Temporary Protected Status, to Haitian migrants, 55,000. And then more recently, we extended temporary protective status to over 100,000 Haitian migrants for that very reason, that they need support, they need protection.
So I don't need to tell the folks who are watching this what fentanyl has done to families, to, to kids in our country and the need to take seriously stemming the flow coming into our country and addressing that extraordinary and tragic issue in terms of its effect. The bill would have allowed us to have more resources to prosecute transnational criminal organizations. And it would have been part of the solution. And Donald Trump called up those folks and said, don't put that bill on the floor for a vote. He blocked the bill, and you know why?
Why?
Because he'd prefer to run on a problem instead of fixing a problem.
You know what's even sadder is to hear the audience say, hmm, really? Wow. And not have done a stitch of homework, not have done a stitch of research because it's so, it's, it's right there before you to find. If you search, ye shall find. And so they're banking on your ignorance. Once again, I tell you, they call you, you know what they call you, Democrats? Low-informed voters. They bank on your ignorance and your lack of knowledge. What she's saying is lies.com. Evidence A, let's get to it.
Appreciate my friend and colleague, the Senator from Alabama, for, for leading this discussion today. This is an important one to have. And I'm honored to be here, to be part of it. You know, the situation at the border, across our southern border, is by any standard, a humanitarian crisis, and nothing short of that. Vice President Kamala Harris, appointed by President Biden as his borders czar, publicly declared that she would focus, as borders czar, on addressing the root causes of immigration. However, now that Kamala Harris is the Democrats' nominee for the presidency, she and the legacy media want to pretend that was never the case. Axios even reported that Vice President Kamala Harris never actually had, it's a direct quote, never actually had the title of borders czar. It's funny, because that's a, a claim that contradicts the reporting that we've seen from Axios itself on this. In fact, we can see that right here in this chart. On April 14th, 2021, Axios reported that, quote, Harris, you know, who had been appointed by the, by President Biden as borders czar, said she would be looking for the root causes that drive immigration. Moreover, a tweet from her official Twitter handle further emphasized her role. Quote, @POTUS asked me to lead our diplomatic work with Mexico, El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras. To address the situation at the southern border, we have to address the root causes of migration. It won't be easy work, but it's necessary. I agree, it's necessary. She took on this role. She acknowledged the role, and she failed. The border.
Fix. We've seen progress. But the, the, the real work is going to take time to manifest itself. Will it be worth it? Yes. Will it take some time? Yes.
There's one other topic I wanted to talk to you about. Let me just quickly put a button.
Okay.
Do you have any plans to visit the border?
I'm here in Guatemala today at some point. You know, we are going to the border. We've been to the border. So this whole, this whole, this whole thing about the border, we've been to the border. We've been to the border.
You haven't been to the border.
And I haven't been to Europe. And I don't, I don't understand the point that you're making. I'm not discounting. And he has put his political, personal political security before border security. Has understand, even in the intervening months, what that bill would have done to give support to folks who care about this issue. And this again gets to the point about what does leadership really look like? And is it about you or is it about the people? Is it about running on problems or fixing problems? My work and my career has always been about saying, let's fix problems. Let's address the needs, because we know it's within our capacity to do that.
So to answer Justin's question, now that.
Jesus be a fence, literally. Because now, Ms. Savea, you know what? Oprah's coming in to say, to answer the question, because she apparently didn't. Let me save you, girl, because you just went around. You gave him word salad. Let me fix this for you, okay? Because she didn't answer the question, as she always does. She consistently speaks in circles and hopes you get lost in all of the word salad that you forget what you were even talking about. And you probably have. You probably lost a couple of brain cells by even just listening to her speak. So let's see how Ms. Oprah tries to fix it.
That bill has gone and hasn't passed. Will you reintroduce that?
Absolutely. And when I am elected President of the United States, I will make sure that bill gets to my desk and I will sign it into law.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
I'm a gun owner, Tim.
I did not know that.
If somebody breaks in my house, they're getting shot.
Yes, yes, I, I, I hear that.
Hey, if you break in my house, you're going to get shot. I know they're breaking into the country, but never mind that. What, you said they're putting a tent in your front yard? If they break in my house, they're getting shot. I hope you're paying attention to the hypocrisy. Rules for thee, none for me.
I hear that.
Probably should not have said that. My staff will deal with that later.
But listen to this. A, a majority of young Americans, 18 to 34, say that the cost of living is their top issue ahead of the election. Let's take a look.
A long shot. Her tax plan is phenomenal, no glaze.
Kamala Harris just delivered her new economic plan. And boy, oh, boy, is it good for small business owners.
Holy shit, you guys. Kamala Harris is going to announce tomorrow a $25,000 tax credit for first-time homebuyers.
When I am elected president, I will make it a top priority to bring down costs and increase economic security for all Americans.
Well, Rachel and Garrett are joining us on Zoom from Pennsylvania. And I understand your sister and brother-in-law moved in, and you're hoping to save money to have a second child?
That's right. Hi, Oprah. Hi, Madam Vice President. Nice to be with you all.
Yes.
Hi.
And so what did, what did you want to say to the Vice President?
So, Madam Vice President, we are, like many, many young Americans, just experiencing a very high cost of living. We ended up giving up our apartment, moving in with our parents, who were so gracious to take us in for over a year so that we could save money and ultimately buy a home. Because that's what we thought the American dream was, to get married and buy a home and have a baby. And now here we are, and our mortgage is incredibly higher than what we thought it would be. And my sister and our brother-in-law are living with us right now so that they can hopefully one day do the same. And while it's beneficial for us, because they help us pay off some of our mortgage, it's also beneficial for them, because they can save on cheaper rent. But we really would love to know what your plan is to help lower the cost of living.
Yeah, first of all, thank you both for being here. And yours is a, a story I hear around the country as I travel. And in terms of both rightly having the right to have aspirations and dreams and ambitions for your family and.
Word salad uploading in five, four, three, two. Blast off.
Working hard and finding that the American dream is, for this generation and so many recently, far more elusive than it's been. And we need to deal with that. And there are a number of ways. One is bringing down the cost of everyday necessities, including groceries. So that's why I'm taking on, for example, price gouging, which is when, you know, most companies and corporations are good, but for those bad ones, they take advantage of people, especially during a pandemic or extreme weather. And they end up jacking up prices. And there needs to be accountability and consequence for that. So I'm going to be taking on price gouging. But it's also about dealing with what we need to do around homeownership, right? So as someone mentioned during this, this film, look, I grew up a child of a mother who worked very hard. She raised me and my sister. And she saved up. And by the time I was a teenager, she was able to buy a home. And we grew up actually, for a long time, in an apartment.
Well, here she goes with the same old rant that she does everywhere she goes when she's answered these questions. And she gives the same scripted response. But if you look at the expression on their faces, you can tell they are thinking like, oh my goodness, she doesn't have a plan? How much did they pay them to show up for this interview and ask these questions? And to pretend that they are actually supporting her? How much did they get paid? How many of you would be willing to bet that these people aren't going to vote for Kamala Harris? They're looking at her like, what in God's creation? They're looking at her like, what in God's creation?
...on top of a childcare center that was owned by the woman, we called our second mother because she helped my mother raise us. And she was a small business owner, Ms. Shelton. So I'll bring all this together to tell you, the way I think about it is, one, when people work hard and have a dream of buying a home, we should give you the opportunity to be able to do that, which is why part of my plan is for first-time homeowners, buyers, to have a $25,000 down payment assistance to buy your first home. Because people just need to be able to get their foot in the door and then you'll do the hard work. Part of my plan is what we need to do to support small businesses. Because my second mother was a small business owner and I love our small businesses and our small business owners. They are not only business leaders, they are community leaders, they, they mentor, they hire locally. And we have so many entrepreneurs in our country who have great ideas, incredible work ethic, but not necessarily access to capital because not everybody, like my opponent, was handed $400 million on a silver plate that he filed bankruptcy six times on. And so part of my plan is to give startup, small businesses a $50,000 tax deduction to start up their small business. Right now it's $5,000. Nobody can start a small business with $5,000. So that's part of my plan.
That's a teeny tiny business.
That's, that, that's a business in-
Teeny tiny business.
It's a concept of a business, right? You know, right?
Now sadly, I don't know what's more sickening or what's worse, Kamala Harris or the people blindly cheering her on as if to say what she's actually saying makes sense? It's credible? This is extraordinary. This is amazing, amazingly sick.
It's still on paper with the $5,000.
It just hasn't happened, right? Part of the, to speak to you guys and your family and your dreams, is what we need to do around giving middle-class families tax breaks. And so part of my plan is also to extend and expand the child tax credit to $6,000 so that you can, in the first year of your child's life, have the resources to be able to buy a crib and a car seat and, and clothes for your baby, knowing that's such an extraordinarily important time in their development and you shouldn't have to worry about how you're going to take care of their basic needs. All of this and more is part of what I plan to build and I call it an opportunity economy. And it's basically about creating opportunities, knowing so many people have the ambition, have the aspirations, are working hard, but just need opportunity to reach their goals and their dreams.
I saw you smiling with that $25,000 credit for the home. I saw that smile on your face and the 6,000. Thank you all so much. I wanted to-
You all exhausted? I, I am terribly exhausted. Every time I have to listen to her speak, it is incredibly frustrating, it is incredibly mentally exhausting because she is saying absolutely nothing. She didn't even answer these people's questions. They're sitting back like, okay, we just went around the world and back again and I still didn't get my question answered. And that's what people are saying all across America. We just want to know what your vision is, Kamala? What is your plan? But if it goes outside of the script that they have given her, this is what you say, Kamala, to these particular questions, she has no idea what planet she's on.
The Harris campaign kicked off the Fighting for Reproductive Freedom Bus Tour to support the fundamental right for women to make decisions about our own bodies. And here is a short tape on that.
Oh, look, the two childless cat women telling you what to do with your body. Hey, look at us, we didn't have any children, right? And we're going to tell you what to do with the ones that God gave you to carry because we carried none of ours to full term. You know, it's about my body, my choice. And you have the right to unalive any child within your womb as you see fit. But the thing is that they don't tell you it's truly, it's not your body. That baby has its own organs, its own eyes. That baby is a life of its own that God created and gave you, but yet you are going to take it into your own jurisdiction and you're going to decide whether that baby gets to live or not? That troubles my soul. Now I do understand there are exemptions that we have to consider, like, in says, the mother's life rate. And Donald Trump has conceded to that. But do you all know that that only makes up 1% of the abortions? The rest are simply because people made bad decisions and they're out here fornicating. And instead of being educated and knowing there are other ways than aborting that life, there are so many people who don't have children that would love to adopt a child. There's so many other things that you can do. You don't have to unalive the child. But instead of educating women about how to, first of all, don't get pregnant in the first place, and if it does happen, there are options outside of killing the baby? No, no, no. They just want to tell you, my body, my choice, and you have the right to unalive a child. Look, listen to us. We don't have any children.
I did something that nobody thought was possible. I got rid of Roe v. Wade.
After Roe v. Wade was overturned, Tennessee put forth a ban immediately. That banned all abortion with no exceptions.
Abortion bans are not pro-life, they are pro-poverty and pro-inequality.
It's been over two years since a five-to-four ruling by the Supreme Court ended Roe versus Wade, the landmark case that provided nearly 50 years of abortion rights across the United States.
Our body!
Since then, abortions have been banned in over a dozen states. Many women and doctors say the limits on reproductive rights have forced them into unimaginable situations.
These policies do not reflect evidence-based medical practice. They do not keep my patients safe.
So for the millions of you who watched the Democratic National Convention, you will remember Hadley DeVall telling her incredibly powerful story. And in case you didn't see it, here's just a brief look.
Growing up, I was an all-American girl, varsity soccer captain, cheerleading captain, homecoming queen, and survivor. I was raped by my stepfather after years of sexual abuse. At age 12, I took my first pregnancy test and it was positive.
Hadley is here, stand up, Hadley.
So look at them. Oh, isn't that so sincere and genuine? They're applauding her and saying, you go, girl. Now, I'm not making light of this situation, but Trump already said that in the cases of rape and incest and the mother's life, that those would be the exceptions to the rule. So once again, they're gaslighting their audience, you know, with all of their holly-weird people that they zoom in on and they're like, oh, this is so wonderful. Give us your children, sacrifice, we want the blood, the innocent blood of the children. They're sick, you all. They're gaslighting you. Like I said, this is 1% of the cases of abortions, 1%. The rest of the abortions are simply because people don't want their babies. So they go to parent planhood and they unalive them. And that's just the facts.
I would like to say to you two women, thank you for what you represent because as a 52-year-old childless woman, I want to say to the people who think that a woman's worth is measured in her baby count, I mean, shout out to all the amazing mothers, but the childless women have been mothering the world and elevating culture as aunties, godmothers, teachers, mentors, sisters, and friends, and the list goes, goes on. And you do not need to push out a baby to help push humanity forward.
Amen to that. Thank you so much. Tracey Ellis Ross. Thank you so much.
You all, we're going to wrap this up. I'm going to show you one more clip, but it's, it's so frustrating, it's very hard to get through this interview because of the deception. Now, the clip that I'm about to show you, she's about to tell you how you have the freedom over your body, that there are freedoms that, that she is offering to be whoever you want. You should be free to change your identity. The children should be free to be who they think they are. And if that means a boy thinks that he's a girl and a girl thinks that he's a boy, well, they should be free to do that. She wants to tell you that you should be free to be anything. Doesn't that sound so sweet? Doesn't that sound so loving? But if it goes against the most highest ways, then I can't align with you, Kamala. I'm sorry, I have to say no to your values. I have to say no to your policies. I will not walk hand in hand with Belial, with the adversary, because she can paint this picture to look sweet as cotton candy. But what she is offering is a platter of destruction and death. I pray you pay attention, I pray you wake up. Here's the clip. Y'all stay alert, you all stay vigilant out here in these streets. Because these, the woke mob, they're after your children. They're after the souls of America. This is spiritual. I hope you can see that.
Is to fight for the ideals of who we are, which includes freedom to make decisions about your own body, freedom to be safe from gun violence, freedom to have access to the ballot box, freedom to be who you are and just be, to love who you love openly and with pride, freedom to just be. And that's who we are, we believe in all that. And so this is a moment where we stand, knowing what we are fighting for. We're not fighting against, it's what we're fighting for.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you.